19, what's that, my pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
World Conference?
Councilman Scranchey?
Present.
Councilman Lennoxson?
Present.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Councilman Matzow?
Present.
President Stanley?
Present.
Next to Edson, Councilman McRonsen, Councilman DeWes.
All right Chuck, what other calls though? 19-173 please.
Okay, what all three of these are from the Water Department going through the budget process, there were different funds that they were looking forward to for next year's budget. If we went through what they already had, they didn't spend, and said, "There's anything smart." And the answer was, in some cases, yes. Now go through each RL, and go from out separate. First one is, we have two different capital lines, one that says water valves and this says water, water valves and fittings. All we're doing is merging them into one line, so we have two lines out there. That's all we're doing with that.
With all three of these RL fitting?
No, that's the first one. The second one, uh...
Any comments or questions on the first, I'm sorry. Go ahead Chuck.
The second one is, there's a sand filter rehab project that we set up out there a couple of years ago, thinking that we could get some money into that, about $125,000, and do rehabs little by little. There's basically 10 sand filters that operate with a water filtration plant. They do not need 10, okay? They need roughly four, okay? We're gonna do some work on it. To replace four of them is gonna be about a half million dollars, okay? So, we're thinking if they're gonna go out and research this next year, and figure out what they have to do in 2020, buy it for either $500,000 or the cost money that they need, we can do the sand filters that they do need. So we have $125,000 there. We're asking to move some of that money out. We have the RL here in front of me. Some of the money is going to the tank mixer, okay? Which is what they do so they don't get the settlement around the tanks, okay? Keep it moving. The other money is going to rehab and purchase some type of new pumps. I think it's called a variable motor drive or something. I think there's two of them, looking at doing. Look at it, they need ASAP, okay? So, I can't remember exactly how I sent the money out, but I know it went into...
The tank mixers are 45, the equipment rehab is 30, and the equipment is 50.
That's... Look at that extra money there. By doing this, we don't have to put this money in the budget. The last one is, there's a large amount of money in the hydr program. These are the items that are out on the city streets. It got to be a very large number because we used to supply the contractors buying the hydrants from us, and then they would use those hydrants on the streets. That became a problem, okay? Getting paid from the contractor and things of that nature. So, we stopped it. We're now making the contractor, we're doing reconstruction. They're buying the hydrants themselves, okay? So we do not need the same type of inventory, the dollar value that we have in that room. So we're asking to move that money out to hardware software that they need.
Any comments? What's left?
The sand filters, you said that there were 10 of them, that they were going to put in?
There was 10 of them. No, they have 10 of them right now.
Okay.
But they don't utilize all 10 of them right now. Because where the volume of water that we're producing at one time is significantly less. So they don't need 10, they need 4.
Oh. How long do these things last?
How long?
Okay. So we put 10 in like decades, probably in the 1990s. Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Um, thank you. Chuck, for that, for that third RL that you had mentioned, so for the 50... Yeah, for the 50K for the transfer for the hardware software, is that, is that, is that a hardware software, is that a software system that's getting updated? Is it a new one? What is the hardware?
I gotta be careful when I say here, okay?
Ah, okay. Yeah, sure, sure.
Yes, this one is being lifted.
Got it, okay. Thank you Chuck.
Chuck, you're gonna handle, Megan's also 176?
I'm just gonna handle that.
Thank you Chuck.
This is, um... 90-176. This was part of our Silo Program. D6 Holly was a recent demolition. Councilman Mr. Regi will tell me it's between Julian Street and Hazel Street, about 56. Next door neighbor, George Velo, is offering a fair market value for it. Mr. Velo, I believe has lived in his home for many decades. It was reported that he was plus 50 years plus, so. Longtime resident, is looking to fence some of the property, use some trees. He is not opting out of the tree planting program, meaning that he'll accept some trees from the city as part of our fall program. And sort of exactly what we should like to see in the Silo Program. Did not receive any other offers as part of our canvassing for that.
Any comments on this, maybe do a table?
You see that?
That's, that's the best map.
That's his map he gave me.
This is, this is pretty good actually. I don't know what I get.
It's a detailed map.
It's easier to understand than an engineer one, so.
Very nice.
Thank you. Thank you Jerry.
Do I sound offending legislation please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, Mr. President, if you don't mind, all of the RLs and the prospective titles are listed. Does any member of the council have any questions?
Excellent, yes.
The business meeting pack is closer to the website for the public, and I sent out your business meeting pack.
Any questions on the business legislation?
I've got a couple. Look, I'm offending legislation with a couple of things. So, last week, the week before, I learned that Bevan Bowday, who is, helped draft the RFP, he was sort of subcontracted with Bruce Toby. He also is sitting on our bid selection committee. I learned that he used to work for CH2M Hill, which is the operations manager subsidiary of Jacobs. And I know I brought up conflicts of interest here in this process before, and, you know, haven't heard an echo from my colleagues, but I just wanted to bring it up again because this is, I think, more concerning than Jacobs' involvement, you know, in the, as a project manager and also bidding our contract. I guess I'm wondering if my colleagues or...
What relationship were you alleging he has to Jacobs?
Uh, I said that he used to work for a subsidiary of Jacobs.
How many years ago?
Uh, it was maybe 12, 13 years ago.
And were Jacobs and CH, were they related companies then?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Does he still have any interest in either, in CH?
I can't ask, I don't know. I don't know if he...
Then why are you raising the, you're raising the question as if you know the answer?
What do you mean as if I know the answer?
Well, you're saying there's a conflict of interest.
Sure.
On what basis?
That he used to work for a subsidiary of a company that is now subsidiary of Jacobs.
12 or 13 years ago with no existing interest?
So you're saying that he, you're confirming that he has no, no interest in Jacobs or CH?
Are you alleging that he does?
No, I'm asking you if you're saying that he doesn't, to confuse your...
You're the one, you're the one creating the issue. You're alleging that there's a conflict. You're asking the other councilmen. What's the basis for you alleging that conflict? What current financial relationship does he have with anybody?
I mean, I think that if we're gonna have a process that garners the public trust, we need to have, I mean, his, his position on the, on the bid selection committee is the neutral third party. I understand that neutral is a function of he's not related to either municipality that owns the sewage treatment plant, but he's got a clear connection to one of our bidders, and I think that's problematic.
What's the clear connection that 12 or 13 years ago, he worked for a company that was related to Jacobs?
It's pretty far away, 12 or 13 years ago.
No existing financial interest?
It's not like, it's not like he was, you know, it's not like he was a mechanic for CH2M Hill. He was a regional business manager for CH2M Hill.
And his relationship with Jacobs was what?
Exactly. I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of any relationship that he had with Jacobs, but...
Okay.
So you're saying that there's no conflict of interest?
You're not giving me any facts that would raise a conflict of interest. You're just throwing out, I don't know, information that you have, pseudo-information. What facts do you have that would show a financial connection between Bevan Bowday and Jacobs?
I mean, I don't...
Or any, or any conflict that he has any bias whatsoever?
I'm not stating that I have any financial information that ties him to Jacobs. What I'm saying is that the way that it looks is really suspicious.
Mr. President?
Yes.
How long ago did he work for the company?
I think it was 12 or 13 years ago, maybe more than that.
Because according to construction.com, Jacobs acquired CH2M Hill only 27 to 3 years ago in 2017.
So they weren't even related companies then?
Yeah.
Who he was working for.
Yeah.
So, and you're asking me, are, am I concerned about that? I'm not concerned at all unless you have information that would make you concerned. I'm not concerned whatsoever. I mean, there's no correlation, especially here in it.
Okay.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm just curious. You raise it to raise more suspicion on how this operation, how this whole thing is going. So, you're just raising it without any, any basis for raising other than you're concerned because you found out that Bevan Bowday worked for this subsidiary 12 or 13 years ago.
And 10 or 12 years ago before they had any relationship?
Right, so I just, I mean, what's the purpose of raising that, that would be? Other than to raise more suspicion?
Where should I raise that question?
I don't know. You could have probably, you could have asked Ken maybe to see if there was any improprieties, even if these are corporation councils. And that might have given you more of a clear path as to how to...
Are, are there any improprieties yet that you're aware of?
No, you're telling me this without any actual factual information. What you're saying is 12 or 13 years ago, if you had emailed me and said, "Hey Ken, somebody has questioned us, could you get some backup information?" The first thing we would have found out is that they weren't even related companies until 2017. On that basis, there can't be any conflict. Unless you're telling me he has a current financial relationship, which apparently you're not.
I, I'm not aware of any, but just because he worked for them 13 years ago doesn't mean that he doesn't have a financial interest in there. I'm not saying that he does, I'm just asking you, because the councilman just said that I could have emailed you over the weekend or last week and asked him if you're aware of any financial connection between Bevan Bowday and Jacobs. And so I'm asking you now, are you aware of any financial connection between Bevan Bowday and Jacobs?
No. But if you had asked, other than at a meeting, I could reach out to them and find out. I could confirm that they don't. I can't imagine that there'd be any reason that they would, since the merger didn't occur until two years ago. By your own statement, you stopped working there 12 or 13 years ago at least. So, what's the issue?
I was interested to know if my colleagues are concerned about it. It appears as though they're not, so...
For good reason. Councilman, with all, with all due respect, objectively, in, I'm of the, let me take that word out. I'm of the opinion that there is nothing wrong with bringing up a concern about a potential liability or conflict of interest in that particular aspect of the process. That's just principally, I don't think anybody has a problem with that. I think the direct question here is, you're making an assertion, you're making the allegation, which in and of itself even is fine, but what is the actual correlation? What's the connection, right? I mean, to my knowledge, by CPA, by finance standards, if there was no direct connection between a parent company and a subsidiary 12 or 13 years ago, and that only occurred less than three years ago, and the only financial stake that I could imagine Bevan would have with either the former company, the former employer, or the parent company would either be income that he has received based on something current, or B, his 401K, I believe the CPA stand, ethics standard, is more than a 5% stake in the firm.
Or stock.
Well, that's what stake is.
Sure.
Stake in ownership, right? So, if neither of those things exist, I think the question everybody's asking is, what is the actual connection? There's nothing wrong with having a concern, a concern is good, but what are you concerned about specifically? I think that's the question everybody's asking.
I mean, specifically, what I'm concerned about is throughout this process, it really seems like the, the people who have access to our facility currently have a leg up on other bidders who could have or would have submitted a bid in the process, that information that should have been made available to all the bidders was not made available to all of the bidders.
Specifically what? What information specifically was given to Jacobs and wasn't given to anybody else?
Well, in the, in the index of addenda, the document that sort of was a, I mean, it was a collection of a number of things, including the questions that were asked and the answers from the owners to the prospective bidders. There were a number of things that were, were missing, like the ONM manuals. It seemed that a lot of those were not furnished to the bidders, that there was a question about the CMMS system, you know, what our current software version was. They wanted to know a number of things about, you know, the current operations of the plant that just weren't answered.
I can tell you that every one of the bidders had all that information.
But, but most of those answers come from the board and the employees who failed to provide the answers. Jacobs wouldn't know what they were doing with the CCM on a daily basis, they're doing the construction.
So you're saying that, because Mike Trevey was the person who was responsible for furnishing answers to the bidders. That's for the...
We have to obtain information from other people. So anything regarding the operation, you'd have to obtain from current operators.
But there were questions asked about systems that are currently online under the control of the...
You always say, "If you can make a specific list as to what you think, I'll have to be happy to investigate."
Okay.
Is exactly what you're saying, that Jacobs, that we, somebody gave to Jacobs that wasn't given to anybody else?
I'm saying that Jacobs, in their position as a project manager, had access to information that other bidders didn't have access to. I'm not saying that they were specifically given information so that they could have a leg up on other bidders. I'm saying that in their position as a project manager, they have access to information that other bidders don't.
And GHD is a design engineer who put in a bid together with Veolia. Veolia is related to Kruger, which creates the system.
Yep.
I don't think you're gonna find anybody that doesn't have some sort of relationship to a project this size.
Is that ideal? I mean, would it make more sense for us to design a process so that...
That people who actually know about the plant can't bid?
So that...
I don't think that would be a good process.
So that people who, other companies could submit a competitive bid, that they could have access to the time and the information they need to formulate a competitive bid.
Did another company say they couldn't formulate a competitive bid?
I mean, I received an email from somebody who claimed to be a representative of one of the companies that was at the, the pre-bid conference, but did not submit a bid. But I wasn't able to figure out whether he was actually a representative of these companies. I haven't been, you know, banding that information about, but he, this person did, you know, pointing in the direction of issues with our, our process that were real.
Write them up.
Okay. All right, um, pick up.
Sure, go ahead.
So... Actually, I, Councilman Taylor, did you hear back from, from Ron Lake about the leak testing on Digestors 22? Did we ever get a response back about that?
I've not.
Okay. Just wondering if we could ask Ron Lake to come in to talk with us about that and other issues pertaining to construction.
Sure, we could run like to you if you need to.
I've been saying, I feel like we've been saying it for months. The, everything's online, it was supposed to be online by August.
Yeah, let me, let me answer that other question, the leak test that you're talking about, 12. The plant did the full leak test on that before and it passed, okay? So I don't believe they did another leak test on it.
When did they do it before?
Not sure exactly.
So, I mean, does it matter when they did it before? Is there like a time span where it was done 10 years ago?
Sure does. That's the answer that I was told, the leak test was going in the past. The EEC version of what a leak test, doesn't mean it has to be 100% sealed, okay? But there's a limit to what, I can get those fit for you.
Yeah? You should know that it was done in a recent, in a last...
Question?
What's that?
What else you have?
Um, I'm...
First, let me answer your question. To my knowledge, yes, everything was up and running, through the system, and obviously, there were... There's been probably a few problems here or there, like you can explain, but...
The last question is, I got a, an email maybe two, three weeks ago from somebody that sent me something about something going on in the police department, and then they, they eventually sent me a filing with the New York State Division of Human Rights. I mean, it was a personnel issue. I don't know if there's anything that we can learn about it as councils, but I'm interested to know, you know, what the city's position is on this and what more, you know, we could learn about this situation. Particularly because the, the filing that I was sent didn't have a filing number on it, so I'm not sure if it was actually filed, but...
I'll defer to Ken on that. Ken, you can, you probably can answer a lot, isn't there? Sure was, yeah.
Yeah, I think there was.
Certain things were reported in the paper.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to discuss this, we have to adjourn.
Going on.
Ken, is there anything to discuss though? Not really, right? Because it's a number of...
No, we just received it today, so we haven't responded yet.
Oh, so the filing, you received it from the New York State Division?
It was filed.
Okay, I was trying to verify that it's actually filed.
Division of Human Rights, I think it was.
Yeah.
I received an email on that as well.
Okay. Did anybody else?
I got it.
Oh, you did?
You feel? That's all I got.
Okay.
I'd just like to apologize for being tardy. I'm working on the line outside. Tomorrow I might have the same issue.
All right. Motion, adjourn?
Hold on. Mary, you got something?
Oh, Mary, I didn't even see you there. Nothing's filed.
You did.
Hello, how we doing?
Welcome, Mary.
Councilman Taylor, I thought you made a special trip just to hear what I had to say, so.
I ran it.
I ran it.
So, I have some, I want to talk about 7 Holly Street. I've got some really good news and some good developments, so I want to come down and share with you exactly what the latest is and kind of give you an update. And we're ready to move forward on a number of different fronts that we need the city council approval on. But basically, what has happened is the state has approved the city getting $2.1 million, a $2.1 million grant going exclusively for the parking ramp facility. Just to recap, because this started prior to the beginning of this year, you'll recall that when the representative from Empire State Development came down, Joe Roman, who came down, I believe, two different times, he outlined to councils as a whole that New York State doesn't have a fund for parking facilities, which is why we originally went through Empire State Development and pursued a mixed-use facility with the commercial and the retail and the parking. We had gotten a $3 million grant. At one point, I thought we, we could break it down from $2 million to $1 million, with $2 million going to the city. It turned out that Empire State Development wanted the majority of this money to go to the developer and said that the city could have $400,000. I know many of you recall this because you were all disappointed and unhappy with that allocation of $400,000, only $400,000 going to the parking facility and $2.6 million going to the mixed-use development. We were unhappy with that allocation as well. And behind the scenes, I had been working with the state for a long period of time on getting them to reconsider that allocation. And I think there had been some changes in personnel with ESD. I think that, just generally speaking, ESD projects across the state of New York have been getting a much larger kind of spotlight shined on them. And ultimately, the state of New York, as it went up the chain, they said, "You know what? We do think that perhaps we have authorized too much money to go on to the private side of this, and we will support your request," which had originally been $2 million, to go up to $2.15 million exclusively for the parking facility. So what that means is that we, we choose not to no longer consider pursuing the mixed-use part of it and focus solely on the parking facility. So we want to move away from the commercial retail space because we have $2.1 million to go into this 304-spot parking facility, and we'll, we'll use that remaining space as a surface lot. So, that's the, the positive financial lose from the state. In order to continue to move forward, we've got to do several things, our city council has to do several things. You have to approve the grant, this new allocation from the state of New York. You'll recall that there was a pilot that you had already approved as part of the mixed-use development. We, since we're no longer pursuing the mixed-use part of it, we no longer have a need for a pilot. We need to pay Pike Development for the bills that they have so far with regards to this. We have to, Clark Patterson Lee is the, the architect designer who's doing, who's done design work. We want to pay them to finalize their designs. And we are going to bid out the parking ramp project itself because we've moved from the original RFQ process now to make sure that we follow the public bidding process. We're going to bid this project out exclusively as the parking ramp portion up. So, did I leave anything out as part of that? I believe those are the four main, main parts of that. That's, that is primarily what has been going on behind the scenes. And I know that this has been taking a long time, but frankly, the fact that we've been able to go from $400,000 to $2.1 million is a huge win for the taxpayers. And, you know, given the choice to, to do this again and take more time, I mean, it was well worth it. And if I found out, you know, tomorrow that there was a chance we could get another million, but it would, it would cost another six months or whatever, I, I would continue to pursue this because the more money we get in grant money, it's less money that the taxpayers have to pay to do this. And so, you know, we shared, you know, some of the concerns that the council had too, and, and we fought for the city and for the taxpayers as part of that. So, I think this is a great win-win. I wanted to come down and share this news with you. I think we've kept you in the loop as much as possible regarding the different paths this, this project has taken and the different challenges that we've had. So with regards to the timeline, you know, we're not asking this to be expedited, so this, you can vote on this at your regular schedule two weeks from now. There's, there would be some, some site prep work that we needed to be done in order to, to get, to prepare for the actual construction, but the, the main... for the actual construction, but the main crux of the physical construction would start at the end of winter time, and we'd still keep on that same eight-month, eight to 10-month construction schedule.
So your schedule would start in end of winter time, like March, April?
The site preparation work, we would like to see happen this fall, and that's because there's a lot of debris and other things that need to be removed to prepare. And originally, they were going to do foundation work, you know, which still may be able to be done, but the crux of, you know, all the heavy equipment showing off, the day-to-day stuff that, like you're seeing on the north side with that Big Lots Plaza project, that sort of work is not going to begin until the end of winter.
Mayor, can I add?
Yeah.
Where the mixed-use project is going to be is going to be more surface lot parking, right? And that's part of the revised proposal to ESD. And the city will still have to lease the site from Bureau because it's still a grant, and so we're still going to have to go through that process. And we had previously approved Tim Haas Associates to be kind of our inspection, and that will still hold true. So we're going to reaffirm those things. We'll reaffirm the acceptance of the grant, because originally we said it was $3 million, and, you know, the allocation's from the mayor, but we'll reapprove it at the current value.
Wasn't the original grant, $400,000 towards the parking ramp?
It was, the original grant was $3 million.
Right, that was for the whole price.
But all this, because the state of New York has to approve on the allocation because it's their money.
Right.
So the state said, we will only allow you, the city, to get $400,000 out of that $3 million. And you were all, you all expressed, you know, concern and frustration about that because you thought it was too much that was going on the mixed-use, which basically meant it was going to the developer.
Sure.
And we shared that concern too. But just to kind of pull back a little bit, and you'll recall that, the reason that we originally pursued the mixed-use is because the state of New York doesn't have another mechanism for us to apply for grant funding specifically for parking facilities. Remember, Joe Roman came down and said?
I remember that.
Yeah. So we said, well, at least if we pursue the mixed-use route, we will be able to access some amount of money. Originally, we thought it would be significantly more, and they came back and said, no, not so fast. And that's why we brought the representative from the state in last year. You know, you all, if Councilman Livingston wasn't here, but the rest of you were here, had the opportunity to talk to him. But behind the scenes, we had been, you know, working with the state, and to the credit of the state, you know, I mean, this was a long process, but we had to take this up the flagpole, and they recognized too that this really wasn't fair to the city, and I think also, you know, shared the concern that that probably didn't look right, that there was so much going into the private side. So they agreed and said, you know what, we are, even though we don't have a mechanism in place to allow municipalities to get grants for parking facilities, we'll still, you know, allow you to use this Empire State Development economic grant.
Nice.
That's what you have to keep in mind, this is an Empire State Development grant, which is for economic development projects, that they are saying, all right, well, we will let you use $2.1 million. So I, this is, this is kind of, you know, what we wanted, this is what we wanted all along. We would have wanted it two years ago, but, you know, barring the timeline aside, you know, we're very happy with the outcome of this.
Counselor, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor. Very happy to hear about the no pilot.
I know, I figured you might be, so.
And I do want to, I do want to put on the record, I do appreciate your consistent communication on this, and, you know, the fact that you were able to advocate for the city and the rest.
It was a team effort, there was a lot of us involved on the city's side.
I know.
Ken Frank, Chuck Shager.
Definitely.
About Murphy.
And for all who involved. Do we, do we believe that the overall design of the new parking garage will change in some way?
No, because remember, they were two separate?
Right, yeah.
So no, we do not.
So the designs that we saw on the parking ramp side, that's essentially what's still going on.
Yeah, when you looked at the brick and the different, all of that stuff is.
Got it.
That's why it's the same site plan, the same water approval, and that's why we.
The 300 spaces, the level, all that stuff, yeah, yeah.
This is not going back to the drawing board.
Right, right. That's the point I was actually trying to say.
Picking it up from where we?
Right, yeah, exactly.
Gio, the only thing that's going to change is the actual pre-caster possibly.
Oh, okay.
Whatever design.
That may change.
Yeah.
Everything else that you saw is going to be the same.
Same, same, same. Got it. And forgive me, Mayor, I'm not sure, maybe this might be a question for Chuck as the controller, or Mayor, for you, do we have a roundabout ball figure of what we're in the load for with Pike Development, given what they did thus far?
Well, sure, yeah, the, they have, we have asked them to submit their bills today, so they've obviously put a lot of work into this.
Yeah, yeah. I recognize that may be an early question, I know.
I mean, it's actually, it's not an early question, we need to square up with them. So that amount is $300,000.
But some of that, that work that's being utilized into this bid process, have they done all the analysis on the ground? Basically, we have put down 14 feet, dig all the stuff out to make the soil?
A lot more would have gone up.
No, a lot of this stuff is work that went into the project, not necessarily, you know, money to the company.
Company itself, yeah.
But they worked for two years on this Pike?
Yeah.
Two years, that's not, that would have been a big builder.
And you know what, they worked with us. I mean, I think, frankly, it probably was a higher bill, and we worked with them to get it down as low as possible. And, you know, to their credit, they've been good to work with. They were, they were looking forward to doing this project, but, you know, they, you know, this is a good project for the city of Binghamton, and I'm sure they'd like to work with us again in the future, so.
So they won't be bidding?
They would not be able to bid.
Because we're utilizing some of their engineering work for this project.
Counselor, excuse me, anything else?
Yeah, I think one other thing, I think just to, again, get this on the record, I think, again, to the administration effort, I think it's, I think this is actually a really big deal because, you know, even though, even though $400,000 on the original plan, if you will, was going toward the parking ramp, right, this is actually an additional direct injection of $1.7 million that's going into the parking ramp, which is a really big deal. You know, I think we can kind of understandably maybe write that off because that number is lower than the broader $3 million number, but, you know, I think it's worth noting that that's, that's a direct transfer into that, so I think that's a big deal. Last question, Mayor, again, forgive me if this is an early one, but, or workshop, do we have a general projection of what the total cost for this is going to be?
I don't know if we have a real, so we get a bid back?
We get a bid back.
I think it should still be in the same range that we were talking, so $9 million, so like $9 to $10 million.
Now, can I play devil's advocate? If we're not getting an entire second project, how is it within the same range?
Because we weren't paying for the?
We were never paying for the mixed-use project. Pike was paying for it. Pike and the grant, paying for the mixed-use project.
Right.
Yeah, that was always just related to parking.
Yeah, the garage.
Right.
Yeah, so you filled out a $10 million between the three of you?
Is it a guess?
Well, if it comes at a 10.1, then you're going to say?
No, no, no.
$10 million, so. I mean.
Tell us what the tariffs will be when it gets bid.
That was a big concern too.
Counselor, excuse me, you got a question?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to say, you know, thank you for your perseverance in pursuing this thing and making it happen, because it's been, a lot of the projects you've done have been long-term with a lot of, a lot of obstacles, and you've been able to make them happen. So with, with the 18 units now going in, still provided, at the time, I remember a lot of council people did have concerns, not only over the pilot, but how this is going to affect downtown, and we have another project, hopefully, may take place in the corner of State Court, and this might, by not, by this one not being done, that might make that more viable. And the parking, I mean, now it's going to go up for rebid, these local bidders can bid on it, it can stay local, and it may come down a little cheap, who knows, but it's going to open up great parking for all that activity that's going around on Washington Street and Court Street, and I just, I think, it should be up by the end of next year, we would say, right?
We hope. Of course. I told you that last year, that's it, right? It'll be up by the end of last year.
The fog goes.
No, but no, but at this, at this point, I mean, these are all the final documents.
The spot that the, the building was going to go in the apartments, is that going to be part of the parking ramp now, or is that going to be?
Surface. Surface parking lot.
It'll be solely for, you know, we won't have, we won't have monkeys there, there'll be a limit on it, so it'll be solely for turnover, so it may be a couple dozen spots, but it'll be, but it'll be turning over every few hours, so you're talking about hundreds of.
It'll be a municipal park.
Yeah. Similar to what?
Kind of like a smaller version of what we got at Collier. Well, is that where Collier was? I was just saying now.
Is it still a possibility that it could be sold?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it still a possibility that flat parking could be sold?
I mean, in theory, if that's something that the city and council wanted to in the future, yes.
Other questions or comments? Thanks for, Mayor, Mayor, brigade news, thanks for coming down. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
What do you mean wait?
No, they're, they're RL.
I'll take a motion to adjourn while we're waiting to adjourn.
No, we can't?
We can't?
No, you've got to sign it off.
Oh, you can't take a signature anymore.
There you go.
It's my room.
Can't sign up, you can't call adjournments until signed. Report the meeting, so you're not, it doesn't matter what's up. Yeah, Lee, I was supposed to give you.
No, but I didn't get the message.
Oh, this is.
The mayor wants to.
What is this, RL? All right. So it's terminating all the?
Our revolutionist and all- American truth.
So he's terminated the old one, terminated the pilot.
Right, yeah. And enter into a new agreement with Pike. Yeah, yeah.
Taking it.
You don't have to sign it, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry, the signing, yeah, the signing is just the, I'm sorry.
If you're signing, you're going to adjourn.
After I sign up and adjourn.
Don't we need a second on that?
Yeah, second.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
There you go.